I'm here. Here. Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Here.
And at this point, if we could ask Pastor Gail Taber from Salt Inclusive UMC to come forth and lead us in the invocation, please. Pastor Taber.
Is there a microphone for her to talk to?
Thank you. Let's pray, y'all. Holy One, today as we gather to do the work of providing for the education of all children in New Hanover County, we pause to remember to be grateful. We give thanks for the absolute joy of living in this beautiful place and for the beauty of your creation and our mandate to care for all that you have created, including each child just as they were made. We pray for the teachers and the students who have already begun their school year and for those who are anticipating their start. Give the students the calm they need to be open to learning and to impart wisdom and knowledge to the teachers as they use their abilities to teach. We pray for the safety of all students and teachers throughout this school year. Guide us as we face times of uncertainty and fear that our choices and our vision will be ever toward all and especially to those who are the most vulnerable among us. May the decisions be made here today be not exclusive but or exclusionary but be inclusive of all of our children and all of our teachers. Even when we have differences of opinion, give us the unity of spirit and help us to listen to others as they share their point of view. Aid this work today that we be a unified team and that this board be a unified team as they lead New Hanover County schools, that no child would ever feel their wrath or be inflicted with unnecessary pain. Help those in this room to hear one another and to act for the good of all of our students and all of our teachers and all of the staff. In our ever-changing world, we pray for these board members and for the various levels of officials and staff who serve. Bless this body and all the decisions that they make, that it would be of benefit to all who attend or who have a child or who care for someone who attends New Hanover County Schools in all the names of the one we call holy. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this point, I've asked Ms. Walker to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point, thank you. We have, Ms. Bradford, you have a quick announcement?
I want to remind all parents, we have the four C's starting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, and if you don't know what that is, it's collaboration, communication, coffee, talking about curriculum. It's at Roland Grice from eight to 10, going to repeat it at Ogden Elementary from 12:30 to 2:30. Murray Middle starts at 5:30, and the school that turns out the most parents is going to get a fabulous catered lunch at their school. So you want to get people to come out and get involved in our curriculum. Roland Grice, eight o'clock, Ogden Elementary, 12:30, Murray, 5:30.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion for, first of all, I want to tell everybody, I'm super excited about the town hall tonight. I think it's going to be a great time of discussion, so, and I want to thank everyone for being here today, and I know I'm talking way too long already. So at this point, I would like to get approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make that motion?
Second.
Okay, I didn't forget first and second. Any discussion, if not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass is seven zero. We're going to turn it over to our new communications director, Mr. Cardella, and he will continue on from this point. Thank you again for being here.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sal Cardell. I'm the New Hanover County Schools Chief Communications Officer, and on behalf of the New Hanover County School Board, welcome and thank you for your interest in tonight's roundtable discussions on the district strategic plan. You are here tonight because the Board of Education cares about your ideas and your concerns, and they want to hear from you. The roundtable format will give you the opportunity to provide feedback about a specific goal from our current strategic plan. Of more than 150 stakeholders who signed up to take part in tonight's discussion, 60 were randomly selected to participate. Those 60 have been placed in six separate groups of 10, one per strategic goal. To facilitate the best possible dialogue and to make sure our community feel heard, we hold two back-to-back sessions tonight. The first group of 30 will talk about strategic goals two, three, and six, which are, two is student safety, three, supportive teacher and staff environment, and six, community partnerships. The second session will cover goals one, four, and five, which are academic performance, number four, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and five, family engagement. During the sign-up process, the board asked you to rank the strategic goals according to your interest, and they've done their best to place you at a table that aligns in what you care about most, though we hope you understand that wasn't always possible. Please know that regardless of where you're seated, your presence and your input are incredibly important to us. For the duration of the session, you will stay at your assigned table. Our board members will rotate from table to table every 15 minutes to ensure you have the chance to speak with all of them. The 15-minute time limit will be made visible on the screens here. The discussions at each table will be recorded, and those recordings will be made available on the NHCS YouTube channel. This event is also being livestreamed, though only one discussion will be featured during each session. Again, all discussions will be available on the YouTube channel. Please note that board members will not be at liberty to discuss or comment on anything associated with the book stamped racism, anti-racism, and you, as it is still under review. You're welcome to email board members directly if you would like to share your opinion on that particular issue or attend the board hearing that will take place on September 1st at 9:00 a.m. The hearing will also be livestreamed. Remember, this is a dialogue format, and to be respectful to everyone. Please check the list on the screen if you haven't already to ensure that you are at the assigned table, and place your phones on silent. Okay, so as far as the empty chairs, anybody that isn't here yet, those chairs will remain Don't forget to place your phones on silent, and as soon as we're ready, we can begin the clock.
And I would like to start the conversation out with just talking about what's working, you know, our topic in this table is safety and wellness, but what's working, what's not? Let's start with a kind of a plus delta idea, and we can go, Ms. Warren is going to be taking notes, unless one of the board members would rather start somewhere else.
I was going to suggest that we just kind of go around the table and let each person get, at least try and get one question in, because we only got 10 minutes, and that means you've got a minute and a half. So we want to make sure that everybody gets heard, so that's kind of what I was thinking, but just tossing that out.
Hi, I'm Gail Major. I haven't caught you two yet. I'm, your name?
Tim Merrick.
Tim?
Linda Higgins.
Linda, I thought I recognized you, Linda and Tim. My question, when I look, when I hear student safety, it's holistic. How are the children safe? So with my short amount of time, I will talk about two things that I had brought to the board's attention two years ago. Oh, North Carolina is one of seven states that does not have legal fingerprint. So there is, and most people don't know that, even people in North Carolina. So that's been something we've been working on, and there's quite a few of us trying to bring it to the state for legislation, which it probably needs. But at the same time, there are counties that already have it. It's in the human resources, so when you're hired, I understand that we have new hires, but you're, and, but what we don't have is everyone. That includes even contractors. Anybody that works here has to be fingerprinted. The other one is, as we look at the safety in the schools, so what do you have in place? And the general one is busing. If you don't have enough help, right, are the children staying safe? Hallway monitors, who do we have? So I'll leave it at that, pass my time, so hopefully that's something.
Is there a question that you want to ask about?
So, the question is, the fingerprinting has been brought up to a lot of government officials in New Hanover County, including the sheriff, right? So my question is, has anybody come to the table to try to implement? I mean, we knew it, we tried it, right? Stephanie Walker, we tried it, and that was that meeting that got shut down, and then it just kind of went away. We probably have immigrants coming in, so understanding that it probably will have to meet the standard of national fingerprint. So if we're going to do it, we might as well do it right.
I know for a fact that we do, you know, as you said, we do new hires. Every new hire has to go through fingerprint. That's, and that wasn't in place forever, so if we've done that, you know.
Well, I would just say, that was a result of us getting it on the agenda, and it did happen, because I know people were concerned about kind of what had gone on in our district, and that's valid. I mean, we've been through a lot. At the same time, I think what we also talked about was that we do thorough background checks, we check the registry, the, what's it called? You know what I'm talking about?
Sex offender, remember?
Thank you very much. And I think we addressed that at one of our meetings, I'm pretty sure. Do any staff remember that, but I feel like we did.
Ms. Bradford?
I just wanted to add that I know that our, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but that Dr. Barnes has told us that they are evaluating it. It's quite expensive to do that, and it's only as good as the system. If a person hasn't been caught doing anything wrong or bad and convicted, not even just caught and accused, but caught and convicted, then a fingerprint isn't going to show that up. So that's what I, I think that we are just kind of in hold. That's what my impression was, because it wasn't in our budget to do every, every employee in the county. We made it a call on some hardware things and some other safety implic, other safety measures prior to doing that. That's my understanding.
I think we've got time, don't we?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my concerns are around bullying and around sexual predators that are in schools, and I think that goes to fingerprinting and doing all that we can to eliminate sexual predators that are coming through the cracks. So my question is, like, how are we addressing bullying, especially related to our LGBTQIA students and those who are the most vulnerable? So how are we addressing that in schools, and how are we ensuring that we are actually acting on that? And I get, you can send a kid to the principal or you can whatever, but, you know, a pat on the back and a do better is not getting it done. And so like, how are we actually going to address what policies are going to put in place that really actively address bullying?
Julie, do you want to talk about, because you know about bullying policies?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Have you guys, yes, have you guys, do you?
Yeah, I think we went around to everybody. Yep, Julie. So one of the things that we've done, so our bullying policy's been in place, but bullying and discrimination and harassment of protected classes or protected groups of individuals, you know, we need to kind of hold that up a little bit differently than just generalized social bullying and, and kind of antisocial peer relations. So in some ways, you know, teaching social competencies, teaching empathy, compassion, not teaching kids how to believe about things, but teaching that, you know, we all show up as we are, right? Acceptance and like way beyond tolerance, absolute acceptance. And one thing that we've seen, and it's kind of been post-pandemic, you know, after folks were separated for a while and then coming back together, we saw more fights, we saw more peer conflict, we saw more polarization of feelings and beliefs and really acting on those. So one thing we realized that we needed to do in the past year, while we have a bullying investigation protocol, part of it is able to be done at the school level with those staff that work with the students, the ones that teach them, observe them, the administrators that end up handling those situations, the social worker, the counselor. But then if it's substantiated at the school level, it needs, it now comes to a district level person. And actually, it's Glenn Locklear, who's our Director of Student Safety that's out there that's in charge of that process now. And we recreated the bullying investigation protocol to make it more of a standard operating procedure, so that it's step one, ensure you do this, step one, step two, step three, and then beyond that, making sure that we can have some restorative practices going on, conversations that lead to changing of thoughts on really kind of tier, you know, teasing people out, but then also ensuring that we have safety contracts and stay-away agreements and that those are considered, and if it's to a certain level, offering school assignment change, and then for some of those that are so detrimental, offering other services to go along with that. So it's kind of, it's very multi-layered, but part of it has to be done at the school level, and then it builds up, and I'd be happy to share any of that with you if you're interested.
And I'd like to add in too, you know, we do have the ethics 360 policy where those kinds of things can be reported by a person, by the student who's being bullied, by a parent of a student that's being bullied, or by a parent of a friend of a student or a teacher, you know, there's multiple ways of getting that into the system with that. We've also completely upped the game on bubbling up to the top people that are behaving less than appropriately, and they are investigated thoroughly immediately, you know, and a lot of teachers are put on administrative leave while we investigate. It's not like, let's go on back to the class, why we figured this out. So much more of an aggressive approach to that. And then also too, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, we did, as part of the Title IX Committee, we did a survey of our middle school and high school students to find out how they, if they felt, how they felt it was being handled in their schools, and we got a lot of good data from that, handed it over to, you know, Julie's department and to Jarell Lewis, well, our Title IX department, and now we have an interim there. But, so we have gotten to the stakeholders, the kids, where they feel safe, we have all the, and all the programs that she said, so it's a multi-pronged approach.
And just, but just real quickly, if you don't get your question in this time, you'll have two more rotations, so you may not have us, but you'll have two more.
You'll have Julie again.
And first of all, just ask each of you to speak up as I'm a bit hard of hearing.
Okay. Sorry. No problem.
My name is Dr. Tim Merrick. My concern is around the stated number of suspensions, both in and out of school, and the disproportionate number of those suspensions within children of color and other different groups. It seems like, I love what I'm hearing, I love what you're saying, is bubbling up to the surface, you're taking things more seriously, but it seems like it's not necessarily proportionally being divided. It seems like we're cutting staff in certain ways, assistant principals and other things, where if we don't have the staff to deal with, is what does a teacher do? We teach acceptance, we teach this, but when things happen, now what do we do? I've heard that we're still doing isolation, and I'm here to talk to you because I'm a retired psychophysiologist and a functional neurologist, and what's stress and trauma due to a child to prevent learning, to create an inwardly facing anger that comes out later? We have to be in the prevention business. So I'm concerned about the isolation. I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, what are we doing with these problem kids? How are we making it more equitable, and how are we, how are we managing this in a learning situation rather than punitive?
I was just going to start, I would just say, I'm working with Julie a lot, Julie did bring us a very outstanding presentation probably two meetings ago about disproportionality. I had talked about that a couple of years ago. It's clear, the data is very clear on the disproportionality problem that we have in our district, but I think, I think with the task force that we are working on together, one of the subcommittees is the mental health task force, and we're looking at behaviors too, and we're looking at ways that we can address that through trauma-informed. We've got a lot of feedback from principals, this last meeting that we had, Ms. Bradford was there too, but also you've gotten feedback in a different occasion about what principals need, because each school's a little different, and the population's different, and so I think if we move towards maybe trauma-informed, I mean, Julie, you can speak.
Yeah, do you want me to, okay. So I love your questions, thank you. So definitely in trauma-informed teaching for not just teams of staff at the school, but for whole staff. That's one of our biggest barriers, is having the time with our staff. We have so many things to train them on, and then the majority of the time, they're face-to-face with kids. So the amount of time we have to give them professional development is always a battle, like, you know, we start doing total war, no, I need them this amount, this amount of time, no, I do. And so trauma-informed teaching and trauma-informed schools, how do we have a more instructive approach to addressing challenging behaviors? Because discipline is really just the theoretical approach, but addressing challenging behaviors, addressing challenging behaviors has got to start with setting the classroom up for success, and there's an evidence-based model for that stoic. Stoic really stands for like the structure and the teaching and observing and interacting and.
Engaging.
Well, there's a C one. Anyway, but it's all, yeah, it's all about that, but, and so it's really about ensuring that we not only prevent challenging behaviors, but we know how to address them because we understand the root cause. And so one of the things that we talk about is having more behavior specialists. We have instructional coaches, we need behavior coaches to support our teachers, especially with the challenging behaviors we see now. It's very different. This is my 26th year in education, and my undergrad degree, Mr. Willornosis, is behavior disorders, and so it's absolutely my passion as I moved into administration.
I'll be honest, she kept me out of a lot of trouble.
Well, thank you. We go way back into a different district. But having, having a behavior support continuum from all students to some students to the few students that really require that tertiary-level triage support while we address trauma and build that into the classroom function is so much of what we have to do. The disproportionality, our kids of, not just kids of color, but African-American students are almost six times more likely to be suspended, and we've examined that those are more subjective behaviors. We have to address any bias that we might own, implicit or explicit.
Invisible disabilities.
Right, and a four and a half times for disability. So we have a huge effort to address this, and we're looking for all resources and all input, but I know, yeah, Ms. Walker has seen a lot of my plans for how we roll it out. We have some barriers, but we're on it.
We have one minute left.
Sorry.
Like I say, if you need, half to seven, half to eight.
So, to me, when we say safety and wellness, it's really everything that sets the stage for being able to have a good teaching setting, that this is, this is your stage, this is your setting of the stage. And the problem I see is that we keep.
Forty-five seconds remaining.
Keep being reactive instead of proactive, that the stage needs to be set proactively. We need to make sure we have the counselors, we need, counselors have to come before having police in the school. In other words, we want to be proactive, not reactive.
Absolutely.
And as, just upping SROs and scaring kids with guns, with big dogs, I mean, I have a big dog. I can, and I live on Manly, so I live in the neighborhood, okay? And I can tell you that if I take my dog outside, every child on my street runs, okay? So what is that saying in terms of being able to learn?
Thank you all, that is 15 minutes. 15-minute title.
If when you come into the school, you see a big dog and you're scared of dogs? I mean, it's that, it's those, those things are reactive.
See, I wanted to just jump in on that, those are all very good points. We are trying to use our SROs not in a policing, look, we're not trying, we don't use our police as policiers, we use them as another relationship builder, knowing that that's not always the case for some children. But one thing too that our board has talked about and is doing more training for ourselves on understanding resiliency, ACEs in the community, all of the different things that children are facing so that we can put the right resources towards that. So it's not only what she does, but what we need to know more about.
Julie, Eddie can go talk about this. Just to finish your question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
So this is going to be like Groundhog Day.
I know.
Different people. We do this all over again.
Here we are.
See if they notice.
Well, I just tried to write down five things. You need to come back to them.
I'm trying. It doesn't make sense, but I got a lot tied, except when I was talking and I looked at Eddie and said I didn't write anything down.
I started to take notes on that, and I was like, you got it, you know what she said?
No, no, she doesn't.
Yeah, she does.
I did ask her something, talking about suspension disproportionality, yes.
I was just kind of summarizing, I just kind of summarized the topic a little bit.
Oh, of course it is.
So this was, that was group one. Do I need to, do I need to frame them? Five groups?
I was at the administration.
We will now begin our next round of 15 minutes.
Did you ask the same questions of us? Is that what we're saying?
I think I asked whatever I want.
Okay. I'm trying. We have 20 minutes. Next to you, do you know, I'm just trying to get names, next to you.
Apologies. Hi.
That's okay, I'm Gail. Christine?
Yes, and when you speak, you'll say your name before you speak, just so it'll record it, because people may not listen to every session or whatever, so that would be really good.
And if everyone can speak up, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Yep.
What? Just you.
What do you say?
So is it my turn?
It is.
Okay. My name's Randy Chenoweth, I'm a community member, and you brought up what area that I was interested in, hearing how it's been going with you all, the Port City United Initiative, which is very expensive, you know, so it's a great possibility, but how is it working in the schools? You know, like, they're providing, one of their initiatives is SO, SRO officers, correct?
No, not Port City United. We do have SROs, but not through Port City United.
Well, they've been funded with millions of dollars to provide that.
Do you want me to explain what they provide?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so.
Don't let me get between you.
Yeah, she, I mean, I would look to her, I think I know, so we'll see. I can compare my notes and see if I'm up to speed, but yeah.
So Port City United is funded through our county to provide three different arms of services. One would be like a call center that they provide, that, another one is where they have community intervenors. We don't have really a lot of access with either of those, and the other one is community resource specialists or community resource coordinators. One would be like a call center that they provide, another one is where they have community interveners. We don't have really a lot of access with either of those. And the other one is community resource specialists or community resource coordinators, CRCs. And those CRCs, we love an acronym.
Yeah, on their websites, SRO.
Oh, okay. So, the CRCs, the community resource coordinators are in our schools, in certain targeted schools, and it's based on community demographic data, criminal involvement data, violence, community violence data. And they really are there to work alongside our school social workers, school counselors, administrators, on connecting families to the resources to address kind of the root cause of some of the issues that they're facing. So, they work very closely with, kind of building relationships with families, because, you know, they are individuals in the community, are the CRCs, and they, the goal is that they can have a relationship with families that maybe a school social worker won't be able to have. And they'll help build that trust level and connect them to resources they need to address root cause issues.
Like, give me like some areas or stories that you could share.
Yeah. So, again, they started after the school year started last year, so we've done a little bit of fine tuning. So, they were getting a lot of referrals for services that we already provide. So, some of it was like, you know, we don't have enough groceries, or we need help paying a bill, or things like that. We're like, okay, well, let's connect you through those things. What we also want to use this for, what it was funded for, is to interrupt violence in the community that spills over into the school community. Because community violence that pours into the schoolhouse becomes school violence. So, we want to make sure that we have that perimeter set with resources and support. So, we have worked with them, they have been wonderful and gracious to work with us after some great discussions, and helping them understand what referrals they need to be receiving, that it doesn't just come from any teacher that says, "Hey, this kid's got something going on in their life. It needs to go to the CRC." No, come through the school social worker and the school counselor and administration, and let us make sure we rule everything else out, and then if this belongs to Port City United, let's make sure we tie the family with them. So, making sure that we're not stepping over other services that should be in place with maybe more training and more knowledge, but really giving them the ones that they're supposed to be seeing. And so, we're looking, our referrals changed to not just any challenging behavior that they might see to be referred, but especially those kids that engage in certain types of behaviors that are predictive. Again, we're trying to prevent these behaviors, knowing from an evidence base, what is predictive of more fading out, tuning out, dropping out, but also challenging. So, we know that certain things happen before a kid engages in challenging behavior. They're tuning out, they're not listening to redirection, they're not bonding, they're not building relationships, they have antisocial peer networks, you know, all these different things. When we identify those, those are the referrals we want to involve in. We don't want to wait until this kid brings a gun and then we're like, "Well, why weren't you serving that kid?" So, that's specifically what they do.
Now, one of the things that I learned in looking at Port City United is they funded, they funded three nonprofits at the same time, and one of them was Communities and Schools, and the other one was Voyage, and the third one was Link.
Right.
So, that's where they put their money. And Communities and Schools does a similar to what she just described. We just had, there's a task force operating right now lurking at the low-performance schools, and they just have a meeting, and of the 12 principals, 11 principals that were here, I heard two of them mention Communities and Schools doing a good job. And then I also, I may have heard more, but I heard two speak about Port City United, that those people were working in their schools. So, two out of 11 is not a bad report. That's not scientific data, but I took note of that because I hadn't heard anybody say anything positive about Port City United up till that point. We've had some meetings, we've had some discussions and so on. So, I mean, if they're making a difference in just one kid's life, you know, sometimes that's all really, I mean, just, you know, if we can change one kid, you know, if we can turn that particular highly at-risk kid around, then it's worth everything.
So, are they placed throughout the school buildings?
So, they mainly attach themselves to the student support staff that are there. And then we, you know, because we really like the logic model or some kind of organization so that we don't waste efforts aligning the work of every single type of staff member in the building. So, this is what the school social worker does, school counselor, school nurse. Now, we have this CRC from Port City United, either their Communities and Schools or their Link or whatever. And this is how all of our work, you know, aligns, but also is different. And so, they are assigned in the schools. Originally, the county assigned them only to schools within a certain catchment area, demographic or geographically, and we said, "Well, actually, we have students that live in the geographic area that go to school," you know, such as kids that live right here go to Myrtle Grove, or, you know...
Creekwood goes to...
Creekwood is kind of split, Creekwood goes to Holly Shelter. And so, we said, "That doesn't necessarily work, we need to help move those around. Let us help you know where the people need to be." And they've been very responsive.
You had a question?
I'm concerned that we skipped over Christine because she wasn't here, and I want to make sure you had a chance.
That's okay, I figured I would be with you. I wanted to make sure he was done.
So, Christine, do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead, say your full name.
And I apologize, Christine Tobias. I was very late because I was at the administrative building, unfortunately, zero address in any of the communications that came to us. So, there's that. But I have a child, and I apologize, I don't know what's already been discussed. So, if it's already been discussed, can you just give me the buzzer? I have a child in New Hanover and I have a child in Hagerd. So, obviously, I have an interesting perspective of the disparities between the two schools. You know, so, I was PTA president for Myrtle Grove Middle when my children were there. So, I've been heavily involved. I think, you know, I'm now joining the new PTO at New Hanover to get more deeply involved. And I think a lot of the wellness and safety comes from the disparity in the facilities, right? I think it's hard to feel a sense of pride, a sense of connection, a sense of community for those kids when they're in a disparate environment. It's hard. The cafeteria... So, my question is, I know that there's budgets, there's funding, you know, it's just hard to know how it's going to be addressed to get New Hanover's facilities up to where they need to be.
Again, if anybody tells me the name, I know a few, but I'll email them, I said something last table. Budget creates or takes away everything, everything. When we had SRO funds, I'll make this brief, it'll take up some time, we had SRO funds, we had like $90 million.
Yep.
We hired more staff, obviously due with COVID, because the whole thing was it had to help with the COVID, whatever COVID negativity, anything in the school was negative because of COVID. So, we could hire staff, we could hire board count, we could hire everything. Then those monies, this is the lab, are dissipating, they're gone. So, now we got back to reality. We're waiting on our budget to be approved by the county commissioner. It's due open in a few days, we haven't heard that yet. Of course, they've got a balance with everything else, I understand that. We've got this tremendous fund that people are starting to talk about, zillions of dollars.
That's the endowment fund?
The endowment, somewhere in there. I think the application process is something being...
It starts September 1st, it runs about three weeks.
And so, we'll start getting a little tidbits about how that's going to work as well. But budget drives everything. To answer your question, my daughter went to Hanover, my wife graduated from Hanover, although I was supposed to go to Hagerd. We need to tear that school totally down, what other community wants? Leave it so it reflects New Hanover and build it back, if that's the disparity I hear you saying. And you're right, it makes all the difference in the world. It makes a difference to the staff, to the students, and parents. And you're right, I wish I could disagree with you, but you're absolutely target right on. And two, we have a budget, you know, we went in, I say we because we approve it, but ninety-nine percent of what we get, we get from those who know what they're doing, like Mr. Anderson's in charge of all the neighbors, so when Jim Ford took, well, he does, he responds, I bless his heart. He had to tap the whole floor, and the deeper you got, the more you had to replace it. Finally, he had to go down below the sand and replace all the pipes that were how many years old. But, so, we don't have a budget. We need a bond, I'll say out loud. We need somebody to start asking for a bond to do these things. Because I'll be dead by the time they start building.
Right.
Or not know who I am, and so...
Is that like we're not thinking about it?
We've got to start now talking about it and reflecting that in what we're doing. So, bond referendum, even though it can be five years...
And a bond referendum means your taxes are going to have to go up. So, we have to have the bond referendum, everybody has to vote to raise the taxes for this specific purpose. Now, a couple months back, maybe four, I said, "Hey, it's perfect time," because we have this giant building downtown, and there's all this discussion about it, and we can move all of our kids from New Hanover into there, let the city buy it, and then let us use it for a school, and then we could leave the facade of New Hanover because that's a really strong alumni, and, you know, tear out the back end of it and rebuild it. But the city wanted it for their building. We don't have land for it, the first thing to do is buy the land, and we don't have it. And then the whole logistics of it, so it's not going to help your family, is what I'm trying to say. Right, but I think, but I think you said there's a strong alumni, right? And I think there's a lot of people who have given the right call to action, and, you know, all of the things that they require. Yeah, I couldn't get any volume of the county commissioners, I raised that to at least four of them, and they were like, "Yeah," and I said, "Yeah." Did they go to New Hanover, did their kids go to... So, what y'all need to do is start to, send your county commissioners emails and say, "Hey, where are you going to build this, and what are we going to do about New Hanover? What are you going to do about New Hanover?" And just keep nagging them, because we'll be nagging them. Trust us.
And to add to that, unfortunately, anything in the circle in the heart of Wilmington, New Hanover being, there's no growth in Hanover. There are no, there's no empty land to build apartments like you see on River Road. Anything south of Monkey Junction, anything from Wilmington to Pender County, anything north, you look at Porter's Neck, Ogden, all the, they are absolutely, I think Porter's Neck's over 300 kids? Almost, two, what is it?
It's definitely over, I think it's maybe 200 this year.
Okay, 200 kids, we ordered four trailers, have to wait a whole year to get them. And so, people are moving into the developments, and therefore, they explode. We don't own a piece of land to build a school on. We, the cap, I don't want to be specific. The powers that be have not ever said to a builder who's developing 500 acres like they do. By the way, you need to donate 35 acres for a school.
And build a school.
But River Lights gave us, I think it's, how many acres?
Ten acres.
Was it just 10? They gave us 10 acres, unsolicited, maybe?
And we have a plan, but we had to show...
But we got to build a school there.
One-minute warning, you have a one-minute warning.
Redo in Hanover, you need to get on it. So, it's in that list of whatever projects, because we're going to have to build new schools or add on, and if we don't have land, we go up or we go out.
And that is the commissioners. I've gone before them, you can go to a meeting and sign up and give a talk, three minutes, you never, you know, there's no, no one's ever there.
True.
So, to hear from parents, and myself as a child advocate, we need you guys. We don't hear from much, you know?
That's a long-range thing. So, if you got them to say yes today, we'd still probably be at the minimum like eight years. So, we need to really put some pressure out there. And again, I brought it up, I had a really great plan, I thought, but, you know, because we had a building we could move kids into for the start of the school year, but, you know...
I heard you were being more active in the PTO at New Hanover. There's a group of parents that have formed advocates, and they're specifically looking...
Thank you, all this...
They're specifically looking at...
This concludes the second round. Board members, please move to the next table.
To do a lot of work out there.
Table one, we'll move to table two. Table two, we'll move to table three. Table three, we'll move to table one.
Those are some immediate things we can do to make some improvements. I didn't know you were with them, but they're great.
And the cost of doing any construction?
Oh, I know.
Much less keep it alive?
Well, everything you touch at New Hanover, something's going to...
Thank you, everybody.
I'm sorry, I like you.
Thank you.
You hadn't moved yet, have you?
Oh, yeah.
I'll keep it on. Julie?
Only y'all moved.
One of the things I thought my question I didn't hear an answer to was the isolation.
Oh, so, it was asked about the isolation, so seclusion. So, seclusion rooms are not used anymore.
That I know.
Right. So, seclusion in and of itself is only for serious emergency situations, not to be used for routine use at all. So, if there's a serious emergency situation, it requires the separation, and if it's too dangerous... So, we've had some situations where we, I mean, we serve every kid. And even kids that qualify for residential placement, when a parent says, "No, thank you," we serve every kid, and sometimes it's not conducive to happen with anybody, but that is not a routine use. In the past, we have had some folks that used it routinely and should not and don't anymore. And so, the numbers are really more representative now of crisis situations.
And I would imagine only older children at that point.
No, it's the opposite. Yeah, it really is.
Because the younger they are, you put them in isolation. I know that they're creating problems and trauma around them, but when we put them in isolation, we are just amplifying their trauma so much.
And it's only when that, and also, only under the, we're following guidance from board certified behavior analysts, BCBA, and we contract and we utilize the services of Center for Pediatric Behavior Health, because that's a moment where this is no longer an education issue, this is a clinical therapeutic issue.
Sure, absolutely.
And we don't need to pretend that we know how to handle it.
Which is, I guess, why I would say, when Ms. Crable said that the SROs are not really acting as police officers, but relationship experts, then I would say, then why are we paying policemen to be relationship experts? Why don't we pay relationship experts, we're trained? Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's a good one.
That sounds like logic.
Right?
I mean, yeah.
So, one of the most important, and I was like, Miss Mason, oh, and Miss Bernhardt, I was like, wait.
She sat right next to you.
She sat right, I thought it was still Mr. McMahon.
Yeah, it is.
Because they love so much a lot.
Right, right, no peripheral vision. I know. I've earned it, I deserve it. The SROs mainly in our elementary sites, they're not there for policing, they're there to protect kids from an outsider that's not supposed to be coming in.
Yes.
That's their main role. And they're trained on teaching the new model of dare, which, you know, that's been, now is an evidence-based model. Now it is. It's not, it's no longer creating drug use, no, it wasn't. Now, it's evidence-based. But they're there to protect from violence that can come into the building, not for policing.
Especially to build those relationships too, and to show, show police or deputies in a more positive role.
Yeah.
Well, that's why they pay for it, not why we pay for it. The police, if they want that access, then the police department should be paying for that.
So, we don't pay for all of them.
We don't pay for all of them. No. So, we pay for the elementary ones. We write a grant, a safety grant, every year to pay for the elementary SROs, because we want that as a part of our community safety, and we see killer relationships all the time with, our SROs are showing up at Special Olympics to support, and they're the biggest cheerleaders, mainly among, you know, that population. But for our middle and high schools, and especially our high schools, the sheriff's office pays for those. So, we don't bear the entire cost of that.
I did see, I thought, what, 1.5 million or something in the budget for SROs?
So, our part, so it depends on where it falls in the budget and whether those funds came, slid from the county, or whether they're funds that we secure. So, our funds that we secure are around $350,000 in general, because that covers the rest of what we need to cover elementaries.
Thank you.
And I'm just going on memory.
It's $348,500, don't...
Right.
We're sending an email.
I know, I know. I feel like I got...
Remember, this is being recorded.
And I didn't know what to do.
I know.
What to prepare for.
Right.
I love it, I love listening to that.
How do you feel about that?
I mean, I've had more stressful situations, but I'm okay, let's keep going.
You're doing great.
So, Julie, you know that I have a special ed child. And so, I hear you say about giving people the option of moving schools, but it's the kid who got bullied who gets that option, not the, in other words, we don't move the bullier, we tell the kid who got bullied.
Not necessarily. So...
It seems like more often than not, that's the case.
So, in situations where there is, so it can happen that way, it can, we're going to offer no matter what for, when a situation has been serious enough, because sometimes it's about being back in that building, whether the same people are there or not. So, we have to remember there might be a trauma effect there. But for students who have engaged in substantiated bullying, and it reaches the level that the student code of conduct says that this needs to be a removal from this environment, then we do that. And we also track, which we try not for, you know, to miss any of these, but try to track, But try to track and we remind parents, let us know, let us know when, if there's a transition from fifth to sixth grade or eighth grade to ninth grade and you're going to be going back to a place where you had a previous mate, a classmate or peer that um, was, um, were bullying was substantiated, then we need to look at another transfer option. So it's not a required transfer. It's a transfer option, but some other students have a required transfer. Disciplinary assignment. Sorry, I was, I took over.
I mean, you're doing great. You're doing fantastic.
I think we went around.
I didn't even know the question.
Are we back there? We're back going around?
We've got nine minutes.
I was just looking, I'm, I'm going to jump on what we kind of already covered. Um, one of the things we talk about um, at uh, reporting. Ethics 360, there's concerns there because it is overseen by Title IX. Just putting that out there. Reporting isn't always put in there. Let me just clarify. One of the things I think we need to do, and I tell everybody that I know in the school system, whoever they are, you have to document. Phone calls are easy. Come into the office are easy. But when you have a problem and you want to follow up, you cannot do that unless you have it in writing. And my, my case that I want to just tell you about that was documented. We had um, a child being taunted because she was not vaccinated. So this was, I don't know how long ago, two years ago. So I had advised the parent, are you documenting? We did. That teacher ended up being removed. So that's a process that we ourselves can protect ourselves and also if the school has it in place, it doesn't have to come to us, right? So if that's something we can think about, it's an easy process. But you get into a habit of just doing verbal, then there is nothing that you can document um, to help yourself do, whether you're a principal or a teacher, right? It all should be so. That documentation gave us a, a really solid evidential case.
And do you know about the Speak Up Say Something Act 2 as well as Ethics 360? Okay, I want to make you aware of that because that is something that, from feedback from principals that our students do use, which I value, a way for students to be able to communicate to us about what's going on with concerns. So.
Yeah, and then it's documented. That's kind of the question.
And we can, and we can run reports to show how many came from, and, and they're all, let me back up. About three or four years ago, um, right when I moved into this role, it was really obvious to us that we didn't have a way for folks to tell us things anonymously if they felt like they needed to. And that wasn't going to give us all the information we needed. If it was no, if it's anonymous, we ignore it. That cannot be our plan ever. And so in creating Ethics 360, we worked with the developers. I was in on that original um, work. We worked with the developers. It was mainly a, a human resources system, but we built it to give us access to um, recorded. We can't go in and delete reports. Recorded, verified, date stamped, and they can be anonymous. And there's a way to communicate back and forth with the reporter in the system, which was really important. Otherwise you, because I've seen reports that are anonymous and I, and I can respond back and say, I need more information on this. And it's like, oh, okay, here's a person's name. That's very helpful. And I still don't know who the person is that reported it. That's great. I don't need to know. But having, and, and because that system is there, we use that to re-document all of our substantiated bullying cases because they don't all necessarily go into Power School. And the victim and the um, offender can be kind of mixed up in a bullying investigation. So we log them all in Ethics 360. Well, then we want to make sure, because we can run those reports. Because it isn't editable. The data that goes in, we don't edit.
I've done one.
Yeah.
As an outsider. And it got a, it got a no and then there was no follow-up. It was, there's your answer. So that, I'm, I'm uh, looking at it from the outside.
Right, sometimes I have to push back. Yeah, sometimes I have to push back. Yes, and Say Something, I got one today. Kids are using them over the summer.
One of these really simple fixes, I would think, is when we have nonprofits who are willing to do things for kids to get ready for school, you know, get your supplies for the beginning of the year like now. The date we give the nonprofits is based on the traditional calendar, which means our um, restart, restart, kids will miss it all. So there are poorest kids, our Title I kids, some of our Title I kids. And even if something is done at the school separate, it's done after you would already have bought stuff. It's done at back to school night. So we're putting a, a burden on families that we don't need to by just that, I mean, I don't think that any nonprofit would have really cared whether they did it next week or three weeks ago.
I don't know that they ask us for a date. They usually tell us when it's happening.
Well, it's.
I mean, we can offer feedback, but I don't, I've never been asked what date should be used.
I know depending on the school, there are some schools that do their own supply buying. Um, my boys used to go to Winter Park and every year they're like, here's the supply list. If you can get it, you can get it, but otherwise we're providing it. Um, and so I do know that some of the schools do that separately. Um, but I definitely get what you're saying, like making sure that we're including all of our kids and making sure if we wanted to reach out to, you know, previous donors um, earlier. And just say, hey, we have kids in this school. They might need some supplies. Would you be willing to donate something? Um, so reaching out earlier. That makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all.
Very good.
As I said, I think that's a simple one. It's just a matter of communicating to right people.
I have a question about that. Esser funds, were, weren't they used to bring along a lot of therapists, a lot of counselors? So uh, and Miss Matta said that uh, those funds are gone now. So is that just flipped over to the county?
We reached out to the county for, to try to supplement some of those. We, uh, Dr. Barnes over there has actually worked with a lot of the folks to try to, you know, shift them to a different school or find another.
Okay, so every school does not have a therapist?
No, like a, a school-based mental health therapist? Yeah. You don't want me to jump in? Um, sorry, I mean, sorry. So every school, every school has access to school-based mental health therapists. And um, we um, use those from county staff. So that's health and human services staff that work in the same building as Public Health and DSS. So their caseloads can fluctuate so that if we have a stronger caseload at one school and lesser caseload at another, they can move over. But we can't just assign school-based mental health. It's still based on, it's mental health service that the parent has to consent to. And so there's, there's sometimes a barrier, a trust factor there. Um, but in our high schools, our traditional high schools, we don't have county school-based mental health therapists. We have a full health clinic um, through Coastal Horizons. They're called the WAT clinics, Wilmington Health Access for Teens. And we have therapists in those buildings along with nurse practitioner and all that.
And that was before Esser?
We did have that. And none of those have been funded by Esser. The mental health therapists haven't either. Um, what we funded through um, student support, which is my division, um, from Esser were additional social workers, additional school counselors, um, our social emotional learning coaches, folks like that. We didn't fund any through school-based mental health and we haven't reduced.
Okay, so in other words, you're, you were able to handle that with a budget without Esser funds?
Yes.
And um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bernhardt, that we, we asked them to say, are we able to keep up with the load that we need from, that we're seeing the response from our students? And the answer is yes. Were we, were, we are able to respond to the needs based on the students and the engagement in the process.
And the level of consent.
Yes.
Yeah, we, now it doesn't mean that that answers every challenging behavior need. But who are we to say that every challenging behavior is about a mental health issue? You know, we, we have the responsibility to instruct before we call a kid as having a disorder or a disability. We need to teach. So that's why our behavior process is instructive.
Your kids can just be bad and not mentally ill?
Well, hold on. I, I think we, we sometimes we try to make a very distinct break between those two and they don't exist. If there are behavioral problems, it is a mental health issue. That does not mean they are diseased or they have a, a problem. But they have, they have a behavioral problem, which is mental health. Um, according to the American Schools Mental Health Report Card, that gives ideas for how many student, uh, school counselors, how many social workers and how many psychologists you should have per student. I see that we have done better in the last several years, but we're still way behind. Like all of North Carolina is way behind. But that's another story. But still, we're behind.
We are.
And so what are we doing to catch up?
So within, um, can I answer this again? I'm not taking any notes anymore. Within um, the, I mean, everything is based on the tax base, everything. And it's all based on the contribution that the state provides. Because you know, all of our counselor, social worker and most of our school psychology um, funds come through state funds, not federal funds. And we're not funded enough. We do better than the majority of counties across the state because we have a local funding. Our local funding and our board has, county commissioners and our board have determined that this much contribution goes into funding this locally for us to be better than the rest around us. But we're not where we need to be based on association ratios. Or with school nursing. But we have a school nurse assigned to every school. But we're not where the ratio of the school psychologists.
If you can start wrapping it up, we need to get the.
So it's all about the tax base.
Well, good job.
That's reaching out to the state too. And I'll just let you know, that's one of, one of my topics to discuss legislative agenda of student allotment because ratios are very outdated to get what we need and to be able to, for us to communicate to the state.
At the long game, right there.
So that is on the horizon too. It's just.
But my, my comment from all of you would, would be that we are taking our money and investing in SROs. So you know, somewhere, I see, I see a disproportionate amount of money going through the reactionary and less money from the, from the precautionary.
Yeah, I mean, and I would say that defensively, do, we don't ever want to be in a situation that we say, oh shoot, we should have been reactionary too. Like, and so, and I agree, we also need to look into the input too. So I'm not disagreeing with you here.
Sure.
I'm trying to capture notes.
Checking before the car, right? I don't want to say I shut down because you got bored. I agree with you. So I said, we're in this and we're going out in the long day.
Board members, board members, if you could wrap it up, please, we have seen the next group.
I, that's not, that's not, so I'm just letting you know that it is something that is.
Board members, please wrap it up.
I worked with a church with a school way back from the first SRO.
Because you can, the state can't fight the federal.
My older kids are in the third group.
So a breakdown of what like, probably the simpler question, is a breakdown of what you, you can put on this side and say, this is state. Can we get it for federal?
So, so specifically because of your interest in EC and Special Ed. So um, the, the federal guidelines that govern all of our IEP, IDEA. So in the same law, in the same law, the same regulations that tell us that the IEP's got to do all these things. And we've got related services and all this and evidence-based. And also puts all the due process rights of the families in front of our rights.
Thank you to all the participants for coming out.
We got to fix and whatever.
Session two participants may come to your table, please.
Session two participants may come to your table. Forty percent of course to your table. This is table one. Do you know how much Congress funds?
Yeah, right.
Fifteen percent historically. That's all we get. That's all we get. So that's a federal lobbying issue and I have to sign over here that I'm going to lobby.
And then, so then I say, because it's all federal, why can't we argue with it and you are understaffed with IEP services? Oh, I think we're out of something. At least I am.
I have a.
Can we start a whole new group?
I have to throw another jabber.
Very well, very well.
I have a, um, if you want to email me, I have a book. Um, because I did, I did a summit in DC, um, the Special Ed Legislative Summit. It is the kind of, it was smart.
Hello, hello.
Oh, like smart. Yes, they, yeah, generally, um, I mean, we do, it's a good.
Guys have a good goal to be smart because they need to be strategic, measurable, trainable. Session one participants, if you'd like to have a seat, please. We can begin session two.
We love people like you anyway though. You care about it. We care about it. This is our future. Do you have a child in school?
I have two.
What school?
Uh, Noble.
Noble. Two middle schools. Lucky you. How about you?
Do you have a child?
I do not now. I don't know why they're busy.
Okay.
Nice to see you again. And your name is?
I'm Zaney Marshall.
Zaney? Okay, love the name.
Who's listening?
And your name?
Tom.
Tom. I know you. Yes, okay, okay, okay. I know, I know you. Stephanie, 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 nice to meet you. And Stephanie? So we got Stephanie everywhere now. Sarah? And I know you, yes.
Hi, I'm Zaney. Oh, it's fall. Hey, what are you, what's your? I'm Zaney.
Zaney, awesome. This is the Stephanie caucus, yes? Your name's not Stephanie, you can go to panel two.
Then everybody leaves. Going on here, because we're at academic.
Yeah, this is the fullest. Does the time start?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sal Cardella. I am the New Hanover County Schools Chief Communications Officer. On behalf of the New Hanover County School Board, welcome and thank you for your interest in tonight's roundtable discussion on the district's strategic plan. You are here tonight because the Board of Education cares about your ideas and your concerns and they do want to hear from you. The roundtable format will give you the opportunity to provide feedback about a specific goal from our current strategic plan. Of more than the 150 stakeholders who signed up to take part in tonight's discussion, 60 were randomly selected to participate. Those 60 have been placed in six sec, separate groups of 10, one group per strategic goal. This is session two, so this is the last three. To facilitate the best possible dialogue and to make sure you, our community, feel heard, we will hold the back-to-back sessions. Once again, this is session two. So please make sure you're at the right session. The first group of 30 we'll talk about or have talked about, this is now in the past. They talked about goals two, three and six, which are student safety, supportive teacher and staff environment and community partnerships. This session will cover goals one, four and five, which are academic performance, equity, diversity and inclusion, and family engagement. During the signup process, the board asked you to rank the strategic goals according to your interests. And they've done their best to place you at a table that aligns with what you care most about. Though we hope you understand that was not always possible. Please know, regardless of where you're seated, your presence and your input are incredibly important to us. For the duration of the session, you will stay at your assigned table. The board members will rotate from table to table every 15 minutes to ensure you have the chance to speak with all of them. The 15-minute time limit will be made visible on the screens here, so you can see those on the three screens. And there will be given a one-minute warning. And then once that 15-minute ends, the board members, it's going to be up to them to get up and move. Probably from what, table one will move to two, table two to three, and three to one. The discussion at each of these tables is being recorded and will be available on the NHCS YouTube channel. The event is also being livestreamed, though only one discussion will be featured during the livestream. But then again, they will all be available afterwards on our YouTube channel. Please note that board members will not be at liberty to discuss or comment on anything associated with the book stamped racism, anti-racism and you, as it is still undergoing review. Okay? So it's still ongoing review on that. You are welcome to email them though, directly, if you would like to share your opinion on the issue or attend the board hearing that will take place right here on September 1st at 9:00 AM. That will also be livestreamed. Remember, this is a dialogue format and to be respectful to everyone. Please check the lists on the screen. Ensure you're at the uh, assigned table. Place your phones on silent and thank you again for being here tonight. Right now, we're going to have this also read in Spanish.
Buenas tardes. En nombre de la junta educativa del condado de New Hanover, les damos la bienvenida y les damos gracias por el interés en la mesa redonda y en la discusión que se va a tener esta noche sobre el plan estratégico del distrito. Ustedes están aquí esta noche porque la junta educativa está interesada en escuchar sus ideas y sus comentarios y quieren escuchar sobre ustedes y las ideas que tengan. El formato de mesa redonda les va a la oportunidad de proveer retroalimentación sobre las metas específicas de nuestro plan estratégico actual. Los invitamos para que participen la próxima vez que tengamos esta oportunidad porque van a ver intérpretes y personas que van a poder ayudarles para expresar. van a ver intérpretes y personas que van a poder ayudarles para expresar sus opiniones y preocupaciones. Gracias.
All right, thank you very much, and as soon as we're ready, we will start the clock.
Want to go around the table, or is anybody, until everybody gets a chance to ask? You get about a minute and a half, so, um, if, if everybody wants to talk, so.
And remember, we will, I don't know, but remember, there'll be two other groups coming through, so even if you don't get your question answered by this group, you know, our experts who are here, they'll fall, so. Who'd like to start?
Anybody have a burning question they just got to know the answer to? How about you, Stephanie?
I really don't have any burning questions, um, but I think one of my main concerns that wasn't specifically addressed in the, I guess, the objectives and the plan, is teacher retention. I've seen it personally, um, we have teachers in the family, in Hanover County, um, longtime teachers, but, um, you know, I have a kid in elementary school, and there are certain teachers and resources who won't be returning, you know, after, after last year. That's concerning. And, um, you know, we have friends whose kids are in middle and high school, and they had courses where they didn't have teachers last year. Like, they didn't have a full-time teacher, and that just boggles my mind. So, um, you know, especially with, you know, I, I have two children, one of which needs no assistance in the classroom, and is, you know, everything comes super easy to him, and another one who needs a lot of.
I had one of each.
And, yeah. And for the one, you know, my, my heart breaks for the one who needs a lot of help to think, like, I wouldn't want to have to pull him out of the public school system because I didn't feel like the resources were there. And we had a fabulous year last year, and I just, you know, wanted to see with the teacher retention issues specifically, if that is something that is being addressed at the school level.
Anyone want to take that from staff? Because, I mean, I know, we did have, what was our last table with Dr. Barnes?
Yeah, that, that was the, um, supportive environment for teachers.
So, I mean, it does apply, of course, because, you know, academics are what it's all about. You know, you're the academic officer.
Well, no, I just want to add in and then go, but some of the things that we're doing as a district is that we, um, our county commissioners have been very generous and are, have given us money that we can do, um, a higher supplement than a lot of the counties in the state. Um, we have done some teacher surveys to find out, like, what kinds of things that they need, because they don't, they don't just need money, you know? The, the intrinsic things that they just need, you know, better professional development, more, you know, guidance from their, from their principal, or from their professional learning groups, like their peers. So we're doing some of those kinds of things as well. Um, and then we are offering different bonuses to the, um, high-needs schools on, with some grants that, you know, the Dr. Faison and Dr. Faust have been able to secure. The low-performing, um, schools, you, so those teachers and principals are being recognized that they, I don't want to call it combat pay, but it's, it's, it's hard, you know? It, it's a little bit of incentive to stay there and getting more, so add into that.
I, I would just say, you know, it's an issue across our nation, as you know.
Yeah.
And we are extremely fortunate because our county commissioners have made our supplement almost the highest. It was the highest, but, you know, people always try to be the highest, so they'll add another dollar or two to it. Um, but what I would say to you is, it's about respect in and out of the school building. So, you know, we, our principals work really hard to give teachers the autonomy and the respect that they deserve in that school building. We need to make sure everybody does that. You know, teachers should be respected across our community. That helps us as well. So there's things that we can do as just community members to make sure our teachers feel valued. So I would throw that in.
I would just say, um, coming through COVID, I mean, a lot, a lot of stuff suffered, and the teaching profession definitely suffered, just like the nursing profession. It's going to take a little bit of time to build that back up, and we need a pipeline. And, you know, as long as we have the support financially, and every year, that's a challenge. You know, that's one reason, the, the task force, we're talking to them, because, you know, we have, we have a big endowment that we're hoping, you know, you know, helps us out. I mean, quite honestly, that's one of the reasons it was established, or, or as a byproduct of the Salem Hospital. Um, and I think some stuff is, are moving on that, especially when it comes to teacher pay and teacher, um, I don't know what the word is, but I know, supplementing, supplementing teachers and supporting them, because it is not just about supporting them in the classrooms, like, supporting them when it comes to maybe housing and, you know, there's things that school sure can't control, you know? Paul probably knows a little bit about this, because, you know, city and county government control a lot of the stuff that we can't control. Inflation, housing costs and all that stuff. I mean, if we can do stuff to help them, we're going to probably work really hard to do that.
But I would like to set your mind at ease that, um, we heard at the other table over there, that, um, we have a 16% turnover rate, which is about national average.
Okay.
And about half of those are leaving the profession to do something else. And about half of those are leaving because they're aging out. You know, a lot of, we had a lot of baby when we were teachers, you know, and so now they're retiring.
Ms. Stackhouse.
You know, I have a comment.
Okay.
Because no matter how much you do to retain the teacher, if Johnny can't read, Johnny can't read. And that's what I'm concerned about. Johnny can't read. Johnny can't count. Johnny gets a job at McDonald's and he can't even count your chips. And he's going to a school that my tax dollars are paying for. So, yeah, I want to keep the teachers, I want the teachers to have all the support they need to teach Johnny to read and count. I want them to get respect in school. But Johnny can't read, you know, and I don't know what the answer is. Johnny can't read, and if you can't read, you don't have a quality in your life, any quality in your life.
I was going to throw out, you know, we've, we've talked as a board about having, they, they used to have, I'm old, I used to be a principal, a teacher, and, um, they used to have gateways where if you didn't pass through, if you, if you couldn't read in third grade, you stayed in third grade. So, and I'm not saying retention's the answer to everything, because it's not the answer to everything. But we, you know, we've, we've kind of made the challenge to the superintendent, to the, to the senior staff, to say that we need to increase the number of students that can read, that can pass third, and third grade, I mean, yes, I'm an elementary guy, I was an elementary principal, but third grade, you know, if, if they can't read by third grade, there have been studies done that show that, that, that there's a downward slope after, yes, we can catch them up, but we need, you know, that, that third grade is so huge.
And, and the thing is, since the late 60s, early 70s, we have put dollar after dollar after dollar in getting kids ready for Head Start, all these other programs, and the kids still can't read. So, I don't know, what do we, there's got to be, we're never going to meet this goal if we don't do something different. What we've been doing is the same thing.
I was just going to say, one thing that they did at Porter's neck that you guys, uh, were a part of was the leader in me, which I thought was really creative because it got the kids directly involved in their own education, and I think if you create that spark, I think you create much more interest in that from, from the student's perspective.
Right, but if you're going to have a program that's great, let it be available not just in Porter's.
No, it was, it was a pilot, but I think they're expanding.
So, all I know is Johnny can't.